Can you?
Yeah.
This article was generated on the Internet in August the 25th of 2021. This outlook amongst city officials like we stems from being forced to think creatively about the use of technology in the pandemic responses that happen in smart cities. For instance, Chicago used analyzed cellphone data to analyze travel patterns and to track whether people were self-isolating during the pandemic. And I just want to say briefly about a smart city. In some areas, it's called Envision America. In Tulsa, it's called Planet Tulsa. And here it's called One Voice. And I'll just say briefly that I'm originally from Oklahoma. I was born and raised in Tulsa in St. Springs, Oklahoma. And in 1987, I moved to San Diego, California, and was there for about 23 years. And while I lived there, San Diego was a very conservative city. Since then, they have become a smart city. And if you are a landlord-owner, you are not allowed to evict your person who is renting your property. And in fact, they can stay there as long as they like. The government has now said that if you do evict them, you're going to have to go to court. And it's a lengthy process because of the smart city process. And you might even be told that you have to help them relocate with your own expenses to help them relocate. And this is part of a smart city agenda. And it's happening all over our country. It's happening in New York. It's happening in California. And now they're wanting to take over Oklahoma. They're wanting to take our land from us and state that whoever you are renting it to actually pretty much belongs to them until you go to court, spend all of your money to get them out. You can't even sell your home while they are renting it until you have gone through the courts and evicted them. And also, I want to make a statement about during the pandemic, most of the cities in China were smart cities. And during that pandemic, the government was able to force every one of its citizens to isolate in their homes because they could tell if you had left your home because of the cameras and how they take your cellphones and they are able to determine where you are at at any given moment. And I just want to say that I hope that in Oklahoma, we reject this agenda and we stay free in Oklahoma.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay. Next, Ron Christo. Okay. State your name and address, please.
My name is Ron Christo. Address 11830 South 460 Road, Rogers County. I'm here also to oppose One Voice. I was reminded after reviewing One Voice Smart City that I was a teenager in 1962 when the Cuban Missile Crisis took place. And I heard Nikita Khrushchev announce to the world and the United States that he would never be able to defeat the United States militarily. But what he would do is defeat the United States from within. And I've watched for the last 60 years, our government be infiltrated more and more by self-proclaimed radicals who are against our country, our Constitution, and our Bill of Rights. And cities, like my wife had just said, are in the process of becoming whatever name they want to call themselves. This happens to be what you're looking at tonight, a referendum or a vote on One Voice, someplace that is called Smart Cities. And I'm against that. Every time that we increase the government's power to influence our liberties or to restrict our liberties, it's a slap in the face. And we need to stop the destruction of our country from within by outside forces. And that's what is happening to our country. So I just hope that you, as city council, in this small county, Catoosa, Oklahoma, before you vote on this, that you will become very aware of it and also look at where it's coming from. And then vote your conscience. Thank you for listening to me, and I hope you do the right thing.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Ron McHenry. State your name and address, please.
Ron McHenry with the Catoosa Chamber of Commerce. And I'm probably going to be opposite of everyone else. I'm actually here to endorse the One Voice agenda from someone who has worked in that field and worked with the groups that have put that agenda together. It is made up of business leaders. It is made up of school officials, city leaders that all come together that focus on what is needed in the region. It is the purpose of that is as a region, we can be One Voice and go to that state capital level, to that federal level, and lobby on the things that we need that make an impact in our communities. So we have to have a place at the table for that. We have to be present through those committees before the agenda gets there. Right now, we are looking at the agenda that was presented by the business leaders, by the city officials, by those that were involved in those task forces. But the chamber has agreed to endorse at our level and to help with the business needs of our community and help build on that. Secondly, I just want to bring something up to think about as we're coming into the 2026, the centennial, Route 66. I have had a conversation with the Driller Stadium and would like to propose thinking about every weekend, they have 918 weekend at Driller's, and they totally changed the identity of what they do. New uniforms, everything. I proposed to them that in 2026, that identity is the Blue Well. And they were very excited to think about that, but it's something that, of course, with the city owning that, the rights to just have that as an option. And I need to just kind of get that thrown out there. I think they will want to finalize by fall of this year, but at least wanted to put that out there as an option. So.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to ask Susan Frederick.
Go ahead, Dean.
We're at the bottom of our page. Who wants to go next? Who wants to go next? Go ahead. State your name and address, please.
I'm Dean Sharp. 19404 South Quillan Court, Claremore, Oklahoma, 74017. I'm here tonight to speak against One Voice simply because the Constitution, even though we're not following it too often anymore, the Constitution allows us to have the voice of we, the people. One Voice actually takes away that constitutional voice and puts the voice back with places like the World Economic Forum, the United Nations, and other peoples outside of this area. The reason I'm here is I care about Rogers County. I care about Claremore. I care about all the residents within the county because we want to try to safeguard the things that are happening in our nation today to keep us free from them. We have pushed back the agenda that the United Nations wants, which is called the 30-30 Land Grab, better known on a beautification program as America the Beautiful. Last time I was here, I spoke about this, and something was said about, I don't see even Marxism mentioned anywhere in this. Marxists do not sell their ideas based on defining Marxism and talking about the joys thereof. Rather, they speak about a little bit of truth and then surround it with untruths. So I'm concerned about us becoming much like what happened and has been happening in California, such as in San Francisco, where they have seven counties together that form a group much like One Voice, and they determine what's good for all of the 7 million people that live in that area. And they determine that they will put things in place, and actually, the people themselves lose their voice to them. So it may sound beautiful. It may sound like it takes a lot off of your plate by doing this, but actually, what it does is gives the voice to the people that are enemies in this land to speak on our behalf rather than us speaking for ourselves. The problem is, we should have at meetings like this, we should have five, six, 700 people who are we, the people, that would speak out and say, here's what we want to have happen in our town, in our area, et cetera. So One Voice, even though Tulsa World sounds wonderful, even though it sounds beautiful for the whole state, there's a hook inside of that. I would tell you that it's 1939 all over again, that what we face today is much like what Europe faced in the regime of Hitler because we have the same type of forces that are moving again to take over quietly, to make it sound like a beautiful thing that will relieve us of a lot of pain and we'll live in wonderful places and have a lot of fun doing it, but actually, it's a trap, much like the German people found out in 1939. Thank you for listening. I hope you vote no on this, or at least table it for a time until you can realize what the data really is that's behind this whole agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. That's Casey Hunt. State your name and address.
Casey Hunt, 806 Park Street, Claremore, in the region. So to the lady, you know, with the chamber, I do appreciate where you're coming from. I do lobby as well, but among other things. And I do want to reiterate the, I think we're all aware that there is warfare being practiced here in our states and in our land. Some people, you know, when you're in a corporate culture and everyone is telling you that this is the way to go and you're, you know, presenting it in a, like he said, the beautification, in a beautification manner, you, you know, maybe not having experience in the tactical warfare or, you know, otherwise known as chess, or politics. We have, you know, it's easy to get caught up in that corporate culture and, you know, what you're being taught. But when you look at a spatial analysis of what's going on, and I won't give too much time, I don't know how much time, but some of these things don't, they, okay, for instance, does everyone here know what an advanced mobility cluster is? If it's on the One Voice.
Can you say that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm a terrible speaker. I'm better at writing.
You're okay.
Does everyone know what an advanced mobility cluster is? Or how it's to be used?
No. Just go ahead and elaborate.
Well, I won't elaborate on it. It's in your agenda, what you're going to be voting on. But when you do go look at that, I just want you to consider what other things could be, you know, that this could be used for. I would say to table this, and I understand, you know, I apply for grants every day. I understand the need for funding, but I would say maybe try to table this until after we see what the next step is, like possibly next year. And also, please, you know, look into the word, the phrase control fraud. Control fraud.
I'm a terrible public speaker. I'm a public speaker.
State your name and address.
Mindy Erickson from Rogers County, assistant. I live up in Claremore, and I've worked with our commissioners up there regarding the 30 by 30, and I know how this county handles the plan. Many of the objectives and goals for the One Voice legislative agenda align with the regional, build back federal wards for the tram corridor, the anonymous and automatic vehicle corridor, drone corridor. I do not know how much we've done research on that. One of our county commissioners had no idea what they had signed up for, but the advanced mobility corridor with a lot of the agenda as far as the EVs, they align with that. And I'm happy to stay up to this meeting, and I have documents from the federal agencies, from our local governments that require your support because community support is required as part of the CMFR to receive the funding, same for comprehensive plan. United Nations put out a document years ago, guide for regional development, which is what NCOD follows. That is public information. It's on their government website. The One Voice agenda refers to something as Open Meetings Act that allows it to where you don't have to be here in public so that you don't have to talk to them face to face. Members can attend virtually. That's unconstitutional, and we have the constitutional right to address our grievances with our government. Another one is, last year, the One Voice agenda supported the driver's license for illegal aliens, with illegal citizens, whatever you want to call them, with the assumption that they would be able to join the workforce. Other states have already done this. Even if they can work here, they cannot work federally. Federally, it is illegal for an illegal citizen to work. It supports a lot more money going into childcare subsidies, housing subsidies, education The TIP district financing last year, they opposed a bill that the people had actually organized to get written, that any TIP financing projects would go to the vote of the people of the county or the city. They opposed that feverently, and they got that thrown off the table. Ultimately, our government's job is to protect the rights of the people first and foremost. Prior to non-government organizations who receive federal funding and state funding, most of people are speaking out against this, or people have researched it, and we receive nothing. We have time, money, being called all kinds of names, to bring this to your attention because people are worried. We see what's happening in our state. We see what's happening in our country. We have a tyrannical federal government using federal funds to bring this in through our local levels. It's not being regulated over some of our state legislature. It is all designed to come in locally, and we have non-government organizations literally making millions of dollars off of our taxpaying dollars to make it sound great to you guys.
Okay. Mindy, your three minutes. But what do you really appreciate?
Susan Frederick, Kewalox, 712, Oklahoma. I don't know if you all have, y'all, actually, what Mindy said, you really need to research the plan. And if you go onto the TulsaChamber.com/OneVoiceAgenda, it explains a little bit on here about it. And when it says designate Route 66 as a dedicated national historic trail, that means basically eminent domain because the Bureau of Land Management is basically, it'll be into the forestry or not, and that means eminent domain for the people. That our Constitution is supposed to uphold for the people, the Declaration of Independence, you have the Bill of Rights, all that is supposed to be all in one. Okay? That's what you need to look at. You've got to protect the people, and that's your right to, you know, vote. I mean, it's kind of funny because Government Ordinance Department also is an acronym. What is it spelled? God. It's not the God that I, that's not my Lord and Savior. No, what I'm saying is governmental bodies sometimes try to force this issue, and it's through a lot of, what do you call it? Corporations, you know, that back you, the money part, it's all that part of that, where it's we, the people, that needs to be protected. And we are asking you all to protect our rights through the Constitution, through the governmental, you know, you are here with the governmental body, and your decisions will last from here on out. So be careful what you, what you vote on. I mean, you just be, you need to be, no, you know, do your homework, the main thing. Because what Mindy said is perfectly correct. And when you start dealing with federal agencies like the, you know, Bureau of Land Management or Forestry, all that stuff, you know, that's a federal level. And it's not, it's not going to be good. It's, I mean, the eminent domain, where all the small businesses on here, they may not bring in what Amazon does or some of these bigger corporations, Walmarts, your Sam's, whatever, Costco, whatever it is. But the thing is, is what happens if those people aren't there? What happens?
Susan, we appreciate it. Your three minutes. State your name.
Al Gibson.
Yes.
Greg Weeds.
Yes.
Thomas Lee.
Yes.
Teresa O'Donnell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor John Moss.
Yes.
Mayor Gregory.
Yes. Okay. Agenda item number one, Tulsa Regional Chambers, Women, West 2020, Florida Regional. I just played, I just played. Agenda, John Bush.
Yes, Mayor Council, this agenda, this One Voice agenda, has been a part of the city of Catoosa for longer than five years. It is a year-to-year contract. We are voicing our concerns with what's on the agenda that goes to the state to be voted on. I don't know of any of these things that anyone has spoken about. I do feel that collectively, amongst each and one of the cities, whether it's Claremore or us or Rogers or all the little bitty towns, this is one way for us to get them on the table and voice our concerns to be presented to the state. We don't all have lobbyists. The city of Catoosa doesn't have a lobbyist at the state, but this gives us lobbyists at the states to voice our concerns, to get legislative things changed. And like I said, this is a year-to-year contract. We've been doing it nearly five years. And so it is still up to this panel on what they're going as far as their conscience. But we collectively get to have a voice. We can start our own if you guys would like to. I mean, I can start calling all the cities around us, and we can all join together, and maybe we can hire somebody together. But this gives us something with somebody that gives us things to offer. NCOD provides a lot of mapping and a lot of other amenities to the city of Catoosa to assist us in our day-to-day activities. So it's up to you guys, it's up to your discretion.
Ron, was there anything else that you'd like to add to that, that would help with the change of our decision? I mean, I agree with what.
Pardon me. Will she be speaking from the chair or?
You're a little bit out of order.
Yeah, I know. I just wanted to make sure.
Come on, agenda item number one. So, okay, so Ron, go ahead.
I would just piggyback off of what John said. I mean, clearly, for the agenda, any community or any business is not going to agree with everything that's on that agenda. That's not what it's for. The purpose is to be able to come together and have a voice at the table as a region. Clearly, to go to, for Catoosa, just to go to the state capital, our voice is not going to be as heard as if we have, knowing that we've got Claremore, Owasso, Bixby, all these other communities that have the same issues that we can all force and help push together and have a lobbyist behind us doing that. Again, we're not going to agree with everything on there, and I don't agree with probably absolutely everything that's on that agenda, but the whole purpose of it is you don't have to be behind every single thing. It's the point of being able to make an impact where you can as a community and work together to get those things taken care of.
Anyone else? Discussion.
Well, I do have a question. If we've been a part of this for five years, have we ever had this many people come and speak against it? If we've been, is something changed in it that is causing the stir?
I don't know of anything that has changed in it. Like I said, it's probably been more than five years. I just mean five years for sure from my standpoint. I would say that, and I don't want to say disinformation, but there are some.
I have a letter from Attorney General of the state of Oklahoma.
You're out of order.
I have still your answer.
There's a lot of disinformation out there because, I mean, I know, you guys don't know, and I hate to say it, but you can't trust the news outlets anymore. You have to do your own research. You have to make up your own, and however you do it is your choice. The city of Catoosa looks at this as a way for us to get our concerns heard at state level. And we're not talking about conspiracy theories and everything else going on with the federal government because there's millions out there. But it allows us to say, we need this law changed because it affects our city. We can't just go to the Capitol and say, hey, we want this changed. They're going to want something behind it. But Claremore has the same issue, and Owasso has the same issue, broken our progress. I know. We get to be heard. That's the purpose of this, for us. Get that extra your question.
Okay. Do you want to ask someone else?
I did a little bit of research, looking into it, and it was tough to find, you know, a lot of the negative stuff that we're hearing. And I don't, I don't know where to research this better, I guess, but hopefully I've seen what the change of the comments on this is positive. I mean, we want to encourage business and tourism here in Catoosa, but yeah, it's definitely concerning that, you know, we have so many folks here speaking against it. But I don't know. We've done it for five years in the past. I don't know how much has changed, you know, this year.
I have a question. I'm just going to ask Ron, to your knowledge, Ron, does the federal or the national Chamber of Commerce push things down to the local levels very often? Or is the purpose of this primarily local, going towards the state? Or is there something coming from the national level down and being pushed that way? Because I think that's what the biggest fear is. No one likes the federal government. We don't want them in our business. So how much of what we're talking about is just right within the state versus coming from the outside?
So the purpose of this is this is people that are within our communities, whether it's business leaders from small to large. It's people within our school systems, from K through 12, through your college institutes, your technical schools. It's all those people that have come together that said, these are the things we need to work on at the state level. These are the things we need to work on at the federal level. So the agenda has a federal side and a state side. It's not being pushed down from the governments down to us. It's the business owners, it's the people, the school systems, and all those that is building this agenda. The state chamber has their own agenda as well. The reality is, is this agenda is there, this agenda has happened. This is just a matter of whether we want to endorse our support of having, having a voice in that. Again, we don't have to agree with all of it, it's having that voice. So I would not say it's being pushed down from the government level. These are business owners, and these are school systems that are saying, this is what we need in our state to be successful.
Thank you, Ron. Do you have anyone else? Okay. Here, another question.
Make a motion to endorse in Tulsa Regional Chamber, Force One, 2024 Regional Let's On Agenda.
Question, please. Okay. Joshie White, for Senate Black Thomas.
Thomas Lee.
Yes.
Al Gibson.
No.
Greg Weeds.
Yes.
Teresa O'Donnell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor John Moss. Mayor Gregory.
Yes. Okay. Okay. Joshie White, for Senate Black Thomas.
Thomas Lee.
Yes.
Al Gibson.
No.
Greg Weeds.
Yes.
Teresa O'Donnell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor John Moss. Mayor Gregory.
Yes. Being called provides a lot of mapping and a lot of other, um, amenities to the city of Coteau to assist us in our day to day activities. So, um, except for you guys, except for your discretion.
Ron, was there anything else that you'd like to add to that, that would help with the change or our decision?
I mean, I I agree with what...
Will she be speaking from the chair or?
Um, you're a little bit out of order.
Yeah, I know. I I just wanted to make sure.
I'm coming on agenda item number one. So, okay, so Ron, go ahead.
Um, I would I would just piggyback off of what John said. I mean, clearly for the agenda, any community or any business is not going to agree with everything that's on that agenda. That's not what it's for. The purpose is to be able to come together and have a voice at the table as a region. Clearly, to go to, for Coteau, just to go to the state capital, our voice is not going to be as heard as if we have, knowing that we've got Claremore, Laus, Bixby, all these other communities that have the same issues that we can all force and help push together and have a lobbyist behind us doing that. Um, again, we're not going to agree with everything on there. I don't agree with probably absolutely everything that's on that agenda. But the whole purpose of it is you don't have to be behind every single thing. It's the point of being able to make an impact where you can as a community and work together to get those things taken care of. So.
Anyone else?
Well, I I do have a question. If we've been a part of this for five years, have we ever had this many people come and speak against it? Um, if we've been, is there, has something changed in it that is is causing the stir?
I don't know of anything that has changed in it. Uh, like I said, it's it's probably been more than five years. I just mean five years for sure from my standpoint. Um, I would say that, um, and I don't want to say disinformation, but there's so...
I have a letter from Attorney General of the State of Oklahoma.
You're out of work.
I have still your answer.
Um, there's a lot of disinformation out there because, I mean, I know, you guys don't know. Um, and I hate to say it, but you can't trust the news outlets anymore. You have to do your own research. You have to make up your own mind. And however you do it is your choice. Um, the city of Coteau looks at this as a way for us to get our concerns heard at state level. And we're not talking about conspiracy theories and everything else going on with the federal government because there's millions out there. But it allows us to say, we need this law changed because it affects our city. We can't just go to the capital and say, hey, we want this changed. They're going to want something behind it. But Claremore had the same issue, Laus had the same issue, Brooklyn and Burgess, I know. We get to be heard. That's the purpose of this, for us. If that answers your question.
Okay, anyone else? So, council?
I did a little bit of research, looking into it, and it was tough to find, you know, a lot of the negative stuff that we're hearing. And I don't, I don't know where the where the research was better, I guess, but, um, I think I've seen the change of comments. I think it's positive. I mean, we want to, you know, encourage business and tourism here in Coteau, but, uh, yeah, it's definitely concerning that, you know, we have so many folks here speaking against it. But I I don't know. We've done it for five years in the past. How much has changed, you know, this year?
I have a question.
I'm just going to ask Ron, to your knowledge, Ron, does the federal or the national chamber of commerce push things down to the local levels very often? Or is the purpose of this primarily local, going towards the state? Or is there something coming from the national level down and being pushed that way? Because I think that's what the biggest fear is. No one likes the federal government. We don't want them in our business. So how much of what we're talking about is just right within the state versus coming from the outside?
So the purpose of this is this is people that are within our communities, whether it's business leaders from small to large. It's people within our school systems from K through twelve through your college institutes, your technical schools. It's all those people that have come together that said, these are the things we need to work on at the state level. These are the things we need to work on at the federal level. So the agenda has a federal side and a state side. It's not being pushed down from the governments down to us. It's the business owners, it's the people, the school systems and all those that is building this agenda. Uh, the state chamber has their own agenda as well. The reality is, is this agenda is there, this agenda has happened. This is just a matter of whether we want to endorse our support of having, having a, having a voice in that. Again, we don't have to agree with all of it, it's having that voice. So I would not say it's being pushed down from the government level. These are business owners and these are school systems that are saying, this is what we need in our state to be successful.
Thank you, Ron. Um, any, anybody else? Okay, I'm hearing now another question.
Make a motion to endorse a Tulsa Regional Chamber Force One, two thousand twenty four Regional West One Agenda.
Motion, please.
My second.
Okay. So, I think it was one of the... Motion by Fred, Senate Black Thomas.
Thomas Sweet?
Yes.
Hal Gibson?
No.
Greg Williams?
Yes.
Teresa O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Johnny Moss? Mayor Gregory?
Yes. Item number two, City of Coteau, Marsha Street, three up, the location project. Brian, John Bush.
I'm going to turn it over to our City Engineer, Mr. Keller. So, um, council approved the, uh, awarding this project back in December. Uh, obviously with the holidays and weather, getting bonds and information has been a little tough. In fact, we actually purchased the bond, we got a lift on a copy of it, passed it down, Mr. Wade's last week, myself. So tonight we have the business. Uh, so we're, we're going to ask you to, uh, we bring the agreements back, even though you awarded the project, but, uh, standard procedure, we bring the actual contract documents back for that project. So we're ready for, uh, bless itself tonight. We're ready to go and construct.
Okay, are there any comments? Question?
I had a constituent in my neighborhood who called and asked us a completion timeline. Do we have an estimate?
So the very next agenda item, Mr. Gibson, uh, so the contracts were contracted yesterday, actually told us, uh, he planned on starting next week, next year. So based on the notice to proceed, based on the contract documents, uh, they have to be done and complete and out by May the 1st. So, um, I venture to say that he, surely he's hit that long, but, uh, faster he's done, faster he makes money. But him start, it looks like the weather, sixty something degrees next week.
What did he do, he said, to start?
Uh, he, the next agenda, this is a note to proceed. So by the contract, yes, September the twelfth. Uh, he's going to mobilize next on the fifth.
Any other questions or comments?
Motion approved executive contract act, Division Civil Contract LLC for the construction of the City Division Marshall Street Rebuilding project.
Second.
Yes.
Greg Williams?
Yes.
Thomas Sweet?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Johnny Moss?
Yes, Mayor Gregory?
Yes. Item number three, Brian, City of Coteau, Marsha Street, project noticed to proceed.
So, uh, this is official, go to work. We've approved your contract, signed everything. This will require the mayor's signature. Uh, basically states that he has to start on before February the twelfth and has to complete no later, and made it well, upon protocol.
Okay, any questions? I don't need a motion.
Motion approved mission, have the notice to proceed with Division Civil Contract LLC for the construction of the City of Coteau Marshall Street Rebuilding project.
Second.
Motion by Thomas, second, like that.
Thomas Sweet?
Yes.
Hal Gibson?
Yes.
Greg Williams?
Yes.
Teresa O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Johnny Moss?
Yes, Mayor Gregory?
Yes.
Item number four, um, Brian, I request something for the city of Coteau.
So backing up eighteen months ago, two years ago, uh, we received some funds from Lourdes County that, uh, our goal was to remove the Woodcrest Lift Station. Uh, it was a, it was an aggressive goal. It would have been, it would have been a wonderful project. Um, it just didn't work out. Uh, it became very apparent that, uh, opposition was going to be very costly. So the time for that project kind of will be somewhere later. Uh, plan B was a joint venture with Cherokee Nation to build a new facility at Woodcrest, uh, which was, which was our hopes. Uh, that would have been about a one point two million dollar facility. Uh, Cherokee Nation since has, I guess, pulled their plans uh, for their residential and their new lift station. So it leaves us sitting with a, uh, an older lift station that we need to rehab. Wasn't our preferred choice. Uh, it's probably, it's not an expensive choice. Uh, what we're going to do is repurpose about everything that we can. Uh, basically go to a style of lift station that's, that's modern. Uh, safety is one of our big concerns. Guys and and those type of wells and environment is is not good. Uh, so this brings it to a work from top to ground type of lift station. Uh, new pumps, new rails. Uh, pretty confident we're going to be able to swing a rail around this. Uh, the funds for this is almost, I think, one hundred percent covered by Lourdes County. Had asked for the Woodcrest sewer area. Uh, we think the last time we did it, it was in March. Uh, we're seeing, yes, depending on leak times, if anybody in this business knows, pumps, new needs, controls, you know, it's a lot. But, uh, we're, we, we think it's good. Uh, it's, it's, uh, definitely a facelift, a lift station that ought to carry it as long as it needs to carry. We have to be ready to move forward so that we can do anything, do anything, do it on the street.
How, how old is it then?
That's just like three days old. So, to, to give you an idea, if we had to go across the tree and, 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 it's pretty hard. Uh, I mean, if you know where the Woodcrest Lift Station is, obviously it's not ideal place for a lift station. Uh, you know, we, we, we thought Cherokee Nation, we, we totally anticipated moving to the west, across the road, build a new facility, change lane, gravel, security, alarms, whole bit. Uh, that's, that's a one point two million dollar facility. So to get to convert this, new pumps, new rails, new controls, uh, all low ground, there'll be nothing sticking above ground. Uh, if we are, if we do get to put the generator there, uh, it will be behind, behind the privacy period. So when you drive by there, you're not going to see anything more than you see today. So, uh, we, we, I, I'm hoping, uh, Fred, that this is, this is a hiatus. We, we've got a sewer guy that's helped us out in, in the crash two years ago on Christmas Eve. Is very familiar with the lift station. Uh, it's a pump, a pump around it to shut the thing down during the entire process, which we ran that way for several months. Uh, so I feel like it's, it's a good process.
Okay, I'm just, any, any other questions or comments?
Uh, it is to be done.
Ron, what would we get if we did a brand new versus what we're getting and just, it's changing something completely? I mean, what would we get if we made it one point two versus what we're getting?
Uh, probably a bigger wet well, bigger, bigger storage capacity, newer wet well. That's usually the cost of these.
We had growth in that area. Would we need the larger ones on that one?
This was, this is going to have some spare. This is, this is going to have some capacity. But no, if, if the Cherokee Nation acre was to develop apartments, yes, this might, we'd have to change that.
I think there's probably, um, transversal, so a lot of people thought that and wanted to have another. Would it hold, would the three fifty work or would we have to look at the one point two anyway? I mean, I'm not saying anything according to, you know, you know, we never look at what will help our developers down line. So if we were to be looking up to get a developer in and wanting to have an addition in that area, would the three hundred fifty thousand dollar upgrade work for extended time or would we need the one point two?
Somewhere down the line, not, not very much. I mean, right now, this is a rehab to the existing facility so the capacities can be... We're, we're limited on horse man size. So our, our goal long term is to resurrect the project that we have. And, and with the right developers in play, that might come back and say, maybe we could turn this off and we don't have a lift station anymore. So a big player coming in. Uh, and, and, and we, we do believe that is to be on the horizon and this thing goes away quickly.
But would it require, I don't know, is it typical for a city to acquire a developer to help raise a certain amount of that kind of house?
Within reason. I mean, you can't, we, you can't break your belt, nor do we want the citizens of Coteau to fund it. But it does, we, we...
So if we were working for Laus or making a call, if a person wanted to come in and want to do something large for the city, like houses or whatever, would that already be, would it, is there a pretty strong chance that a new station would already be ready for such people? Or would they be expecting to have to pay to get that?
Have to be some type of joint venture. And, and I hope that joint venture is gravity, our, our goal is to eliminate those.
I just say, I mean, I just, I'm just ready for the city to start looking at the bigger picture, like ten year solution.
So give you mine. So responsive components to this lift station, that mile long course main is probably way more costly than the lift station. So, so we're limited with infrastructure that we have, then on the course main. So this being a pump upgrade, uh, some rails, it's, it's, it's a pretty, pretty, pretty small upgrade.
And I know that we need it. I was in the neighborhood of Woodcrest people just absolutely went crazy about that. So I know it's necessary. I just don't want us to...
I agree with you a hundred percent. That's, that's why we were going full steam ahead, realizing that coming up, maybe in short. But I do believe in time, uh, that they're, they're very well to have. I mean, we'll, we'll require lots of concrete, lots of board. And that's...
Okay, thank you, Ron. Any other questions or comments? Any questions? Okay, I have to give a motion.
Motion approved, letting Woodcrest County sue the station rebuilding project. Out of this, that project, stop, stop at three hundred feet max.
Second.
Motion by Thomas, second.
Hal Gibson?
Yes.
Greg Williams?
Yes.
Thomas Sweet?
Yes.
Teresa O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Johnny Moss?
Yes.
Mayor Gregory?
Yes.
Item number five, uh, the, the lift station might just back up general, general, I'm going to, John.
Uh, yes, Mayor and Council, uh, we've been working on this for, um, quite some time. Um, one of the things with this lift station itself, um, if power goes out in which, you know, for the last six months, I think the power's went out at least three times and been off for a week at a time. Um, our city maintenance crews have to go out, they have to rewrap the pumps, they have to put, uh, a different pump to it, and it's all done and start up. Uh, this lift station when it was, uh, built, uh, for that area probably should have had, uh, backup power put on. Um, this time saves, uh, time and effort from our guys, so it automatically starts. So what I want to do is take care of the fact that we don't have to go out there and sit for hours trying to make sure everything flows properly. As long as we have power to it, it'll operate normally. Uh, we, we went out, we saw three different bids or three different quotes. Uh, the lowest quote was thirty two one twenty eight, which was from Clifford Power Systems. And so we're asking the pre-approval to put that, uh, backup, backup power on that lift station.
Any questions or comments?
So, is that generator, was it going to be natural gas?
Yes, we're going to put it on natural gas. Um, the, the cost, I mean, whenever you look at the cost, it, it, for me, when I write it, I think it's high. But whenever you look at it from the energy standpoint, that is required for that lift station, it's three phase, which is a lot bigger than most homes. Uh, it takes a lot more effort. So the cost is basically because of how it's constructed.
That way, we won't have to do anything.
We, we hope to maintain the maintenance free. Uh, it's just like the, uh, backup generators on this building, the, the library. Uh, they do self-assessments on every Wednesday. They start up and we, we get to know if there's a problem. Uh, the good thing about this lift station is, is that it will auto dial, uh, city maintenance supervisors when there's a problem, uh, which we've had quite a few this year with, uh, things not working over there and the, the pumps start backing up. And so it identifies us, how to manage us. So we've been able to maintain that one a lot better than we've been able to maintain one at Woodcrest the last few years. So, uh, but we have made those changes at Woodcrest and so now it will be notified automatically.
All right. Any last questions or comments? I need a motion.
Motion for the Ward, the Red Lake, the, the, generate bid to the lowest possible rate Clifford Power System corporate amount thirty two thousand one hundred dollars. Except for required bonds and interest, we were giving initial approval and needs to keep your contact.
Second.
Thomas, second, like that.
Thomas Sweet?
Yes.
Hal Gibson?
Yes.
Greg Williams?
Yes.
Teresa O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Johnny Moss?
Yes.
Mayor Gregory?
Yes. Item number six. Josh, we are, I'm trying to, I'm trying to pass a question.
This is a, uh, civil one from our last meeting, uh, Vice Mayor, not less information to share about, you know, is there any concern for that?
Um, I just had a couple of questions. Um, I expressed that I want to talk, basically, Rick, on, um, our Cherokee side. And, um, the case, the associate, um, preciously agreed to that. So, um, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the preliminary clap for the blocks located one half mile north of I forty four and set between a hundred and ninety, north, a hundred and ninety third Avenue, to the west and south Cherokee Street. To the east in a multifamily residential design area, R N dash one, for Case Ventures LLC, on to conditions that there are increases in the masonry for building on a hundred ninety third in Cherokee and that additional trees be added along Cherokee or additional trees, as shown on the documents provided by the case.
Second.
Motion by John, this second, like that.
Thomas Sweet?
Yes.
Hal Gibson?
Yes.
Greg Williams?
Yes.
Teresa O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Johnny Moss?
Yes.
Mayor Gregory?
Yes. Item number seven, uh, the change, or number thirty five, John.
Uh, yes, Mayor Council, uh, P C O number thirty five, uh, for ambulance. This is a change that came from fire department for their store storage, uh, actually within the Bay Area. One of the, uh, fire departments with the truck there, um, they wanted some, uh, above or overhead storage, um, in an area. In order to create that, um, Myers Cherry and our, um, G H two are going to have to go in. They're going to have to move some water lines. They're going to have to move a few other things. So this is coming from us, uh, change wise, for them to have additional storage within the Bay Area. They do have a lot of storage and Dennis will agree, but this is something that he's requested in order to help heal and facilitate moving most of the equipment that they have, uh, from the old to the new. And if Dennis has anything else he'd like to add, I, I will.
I apologize. We just assumed there was a storage area or ceiling on this area and there wasn't a ceiling. And we missed it until it was being constructed and, uh, it's not there. So.
Next, please, John. Uh, any other questions?
Motion for the Department of Health, that change, boom, thirty five, for ambulance post-aid complex, in the amount of fifteen thirty two thousand nine hundred thirty five. Be paid from the project's expenses.
Second.
My, Thomas, second, like that.
Greg Williams?
Yes.
Thomas Sweet?
Yes.
Hal Gibson?
Yes.
Teresa O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Johnny Moss?
Yes.
Mayor Gregory?
Yes.
Item number three, John, the hospital, you have policies for that.
Uh, yes, Mayor Council, this proposed change, uh, is going along with the, um, new towers that they're wrecking over there. It's just additional, uh, buildings from those towers for payment. Uh, it's a hundred and twenty eight dollars. So on, so that's what the intent and purpose is. It's just adding additional.
Okay.
Motion for front contact change, or thirty six, for ambulance post-aid complex, in the amount of fifteen hundred and twenty dollars thirty six cents. Be paid from the project's expenses.
Second.
Motion by Thomas, second, like that.
Hal Gibson?
Yes.
Greg Williams?
Yes.
Teresa O'Donnell?
Yes.
Thomas Sweet?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Johnny Moss?
Yes.
Mayor Gregory?
Yes.
Item number nine, uh, Stanley, Stanley Foundation, Ballistic Shield Foundation.
Mayor Council, I was, uh, contacted in early December by representative of the Stanley Foundation.
Mayor Council, I was, uh, contacted in early December, uh, by representative of the Stan first foundation, uh, wanting to donate, uh, or formally defend, they've received a large donation in order to purchase ballistic shields for law enforcement and law enforcement. Um, I have a representative from Stan first here, if you have questions about that. Um, there is an agreement that is required, uh, for them to donate those shields to the police department, which you'll need to, to bring to her. Uh, Mr. Bob Portis is here with Stan first, if you have any questions for him. Uh, four? Four shields?
Four.
Yeah.
Please. Any other questions or comments? Anywhere. Very not only motion.
Motion approved, and down for the state's keep agreement with Stan one foundation regarding the damage ballistic shield proceeding from these officers in the particular police department and law enforcement situation where officers would benefit from the additional protection that's provided by ballistic shield and releases. Stan one foundation from liability, so I approve from form by the city attorney.
Motion by Thomas, second by.
Thomas Sweet?
Yes.
Fred Williams?
Yes.
Teresa O'Donnell?
Yes.
Tom Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Johnny Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Greg Williams.
Yes. Out of number ten, John, the authorization of, uh, to establish corporate card program.
Uh, yes, Mayor Council, um, the city, which, uh, in temporary, maybe, be, uh, city maintenance, fire department, police department, any of these groups that are within the city, um, they have enjoyed, uh, the opportunity to be able to use a credit card for different and various situations. Mostly, um, emergency situations, some of it being, um, if you, uh, scheduled for training and, and wanna get a hotel, it's hard for us to do P O's in there, they don't accept them. Uh, it take, it takes some hours. And so, uh, we have had credit cards in the past. Uh, these, uh, more along the line on the corporate credit card program through Bank of Oklahoma, uh, have a lot more control, so at this time, we can see, uh, we're thinking about expanding it to the point to where, uh, our police and fire who utilize fuel cards, uh, switching over and putting limits on. Uh, it's just an expansion of the program, but we are switching over from the cards that we previously had to Bank of Oklahoma. And, uh, this is recommended by our financial record Jamie, which, uh, she was in training today, but she's not here. So, uh, that's what we're asking for, just now, just to move in that direction.
Any questions about the, for the card program?
Is, is there gonna be a cap? Each one of the, yes, sir, each one of the departments have a cap limit. Uh, right now, we do have credit cards that are issued through the Bank of Commerce. Uh, the unfortunate part for us is, is that, uh, all those cards are tied together to one account. So if one, one, say the police department goes and does training for something and they exceed that amount, then none of the other departments can, can, uh, so it kinda, it, it puts us into a situation to have to hurry up and, and pay almost on a daily basis, and I'm not saying that, Adam can, Adam can attest to this.
So, thi- this is a, this is the same corporate cards that the bank uses for our stuff. This is, I've recommended it to John and Jamie as well. It's a good program, it will give them tons of control. They can go out and say, if somebody's going to training, they can only spend money at these certain codes.
Correct.
It gives them the control they need, uh, be okay, like I said, that's what my corporate card is and all of my officers use that. We don't issue cards directly, so that's, that's why it's straight to be okay, is we don't issue credit cards.
And we appreciate Adam's recommendations. Usually we.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments about the corporate card program? Um, any other motion?